Must have y'all known by, Brian Dorn. This we all know from bed until today that he has been the engineer that's been responsible for making sure that the landfill has met all its specifications and to keep us in compliance without any state law covering. And he's been doing this now for quite a few years for us, haven't you?
So long, maybe seven years now, yeah.
You did have me? Go ahead. Well, let's give it again, yes sir, sir.
That's partial reduction. I deal with landfills across the state on a regular basis. At this point in my career, very much I'm just looking busy all the time. So, very clear data requirements and meeting those requirements in government counties as well as private industry to successfully meet all of the data and solve those program requirements relative to our relationship with ground water. Relative to explosive gas monitoring, things like that. And then in addition, Steve Kelly, who's with us at CD, Steve Kelly is the principal of the Cali Engineering. And Steve has extensive landfill design and landfill compliance experience and worked for A M. With him, he'll solve ways along that. So, I work with Steve and kind of not partnership, but we work closely together on a number of sites. He handles engineering design, issues, excuse me, issues. And I deal with the ground water side of things and the marketing side of things fairly consistently. So, Steve has been involved with the corrective action, he's worked with the land. So, I felt like his presence was more to do with if there are any specific questions moving that, as a cover of security moving forward, than on the engineering side, he can. And then on the ground water side and the marketing client side and that bigger picture on that side of things that I've done. This is just a summary of looking at the Cleveland County landfill as a possible site for construction demolition, landfill to be prepared. So, the question is, where does it stand? And then from there, bigger picture, what's involved in permitting a landfill? And then in that process, there are very specific issues that evaluating the site covers a lot of areas. So, the initial consideration is we have the land, and in this case, we own the land. The former landfill area was 105 acres, 30 acres was the waste work. There were 12 acres that were used as a part of the area, access roads and personal ponds and ditches. And then there's 60, roughly 60, 65 acres that are wooded to the south of the park. Now that can be ten. And then in 1994, when the September deregulations kicked in, which basically means municipal landfills had to have line liners, leachage collection systems. They had to be upgraded to federal standards to stay in operation. Most municipal landfills, not be able to do that, could not afford to do that in those cases, and shut down. A lot of landfills transitioned at that point, they're permitting to construction demolition landfills, and many are still in operation today. So, in 1994, the landfill is capped at three feet with compacted clay. That's certified documentation in the A M file. And then in October, August or October of 19, I'm sorry, 2015, cap repair was completed. And in that cap repair, barriers to stormwater flow over the roof. There were crushions on the landfill that were holding on to storms going into the landfill. And then there were road areas. So, all of those areas, just stormwater flow were addressed. There were a lot of bargains and settling that had to be addressed. So, the purpose of that was to get the cap in a condition where stormwater would flow off of something. And then A M requested some additional work to be done. And an upgrade was completed for the landfill. We did a furnished stormwater analysis, bigger picture, where did the water enter the site? Where does it leave the site? What areas, you know, could be addressed that make the water drain from the site? And so, those stormwater improvements were made. There were drainage ditches that were constructed or excavated. And it's actually the really good stormwater management system that exists at the site now. It three septic ponds and the associated drainage ditches. Many landfills only have one septic pond, took two, you have three surrounding facilities. Groundwater monitoring is a current requirement for the site. Monitoring is completed twice a year, March and September. The landfill has 22 groundwater monitoring wells, of which 14 to monitor currently. We monitor for, let's call the appendix one list, it's illicit metals and all organic A C chemicals. It's 16 miles of 47 VOCs. And then in addition, we have one other incident that we monitor. And note, that data is evaluated, it's compared to ground production standards. See the envelope sitting in front of me, that's a stormwater monitoring report, that's their one for April. That's how big the document is, is the physical analysis that's performed on all of that data to say what are the concentrations doing? Are they draining up or down, or how is the picture looking? The reason for bringing that up is Cleveland County monitors that groundwater twice a year. If you opt to build a landfill, your monitoring is not going to change. You will have to monitor that groundwater twice a year. So, you won't have any increase in cost, you'll have the same level of effort to comply with any of the requirements, well to do. Well, to explosive gas monitoring, there are 14 explosive gas monitoring wells in existence around the landfill. We monitor those wells once a year. A M may require a couple of more explosive gas wells to be installed, very six and a half feet deep, or very inexpensive 2-inch P T C pipe. So, it's not a significant cost factor daily. Regarding stormwater management, cover we covered that, you have a constructed stormwater management system at the site. So, if you were building a landfill and you rock land, you would have to design and then excavate and construct all your stormwater management system. At your location, you've already, it already is, it's already built. So, that's another box that, yeah, it's there, it's at our site, we don't have to do this work. Regarding groundwater quality, the east side of the landfill was the problematic area in 1993, 94, when the landfill closed. And there were a number of awful chemicals, VOCs that were detected at that time. A handful of them exceeded groundwater production standards. At this point in time, no VOCs in that eastern portion of the landfill exceed groundwater production standards. So, steps were taken in, I don't know, I didn't check the historical data, in that timeframe, I think it was about 1994, where corrective action trench was crossed in that north east side. And what I said trench was five required excavation, fairly long, fairly deep. And then the clay to act as a barrier for anything else flowing from the waste to going outside of that area. So, that was the initial corrective action that was completed. And then in addition, we did the stormwater improvements, removing stormwater from the top of the landfill in 2015. And then we made that system even better than in 2015. So, regarding groundwater quality, the east side shows how it improves over time. We have the west side that has one well that has four VOCs at the present time, that are just barely at the groundwater production standard. They just barely exceed, so they're low concentrations. We know that we have stopped stormwater from entering the waste that facility based on the improvements to the cap and the grade improvement cap. There are some areas where we have roughly two feet of clay cap to three feet. Now we have in some areas, we have 10 feet of cap. So, and basically that was put in place to create a bridge, to force water to drain. We have the landfill at a low spot, so we had to give rid of that low spot in the road to make it a landfill. So, regarding those corrective action measures that were taken place, groundwater quality's improved over time. That process will continue. I don't believe that A M will require any additional corrective action to be completed at the site. We'll continue to monitor. The steps that were completed in 2015, the groundwater flows very slowly in the site, three to four feet a year. The steps that we took in 2015 will start showing up in 2022 next year. And then for the next eight years, we'll see water that was under the landfill at that time in 2015, it will show up almost on the battery around the perimeter. So, it takes that long for the water to just move over in the site, it's very slow. So, we'll see a continuous decrease over the next eight to 10 years in concentrations of any type of chemicals or control. So, I'm confident that the water quality's going to continue to improve over time, it has substantial already. In addition, there's a cold wall at the site. We've performed evaluation to see if the cold wall is naturally occurring. It is in this area a lot. And so, in a good site-specific soil testing, all the kind of landfill, there's a tremendous amount of cold wall in the soil that's naturally occurring. We did a lot of samples in background areas that have never been affected by the landfill, and it's very high concentration. So, the wall is present in sites, and in these ground water. So, A M is not focused on the wall, it's a temporary concern at this point. Because we've shown that what we're finding is within acceptable anticipated concentrations based on what's in the source around the blocks. So, that's not an issue far from, in terms of water quality. Long-term, and I've covered a little bit of this, there are monitoring requirements, they're not going to change if you're building a CD landfill. You're going to have to monitor groundwater, you're going to have to monitor those gases at the facility, and you're already doing that, so your costs aren't going to change. There is an additional monitoring, soil water, N P D S, National Pollution Discharge, Information System Permit Monitoring. You'd have three pond outfalls, water coming down the septic pond, you'd have a sample. There's a semi monitoring requirement that has to be in for construction to solve those facility. And then you may have another requirement, you build an equipment wash station on the property. A lot of facilities are not to do that. So, if you do build an equipment wash area, then you'll have to do monthly monitoring at this point. It's reasonably inexpensive, it's a lot cheaper than groundwater monitoring. This is how to collect samples, quick and easy, easy to grab a sample from the street, takes a few minutes to do. And then requirements are far less stringent than the solid waste analysis area. So, the cost generally, if you have to do the two a year, you're like, roughly 1,600 a year. If you find a local company that can get to your site, you know, very easily, not too far away, no need to travel, it costs relatively less. Relative to waste, this landfill was formerly municipal solid waste landfill, a city landfill. Where you're looking at, where would be a put in construction demolition. And you basically have different categories of landfills. You have hazardous waste landfill, and there's only one in the state. And the criteria for building that are extremely strict and important. And you have industrial landfills that are industry specific, and those have very specific standards as well. Then you have municipal landfill, which has to meet A M's solid waste, as I mentioned, liner, leachage collection requirements. Then you have a C D landfill, a C D landfill does not have an air liner, does not have an illegal leachage system to it, it's not necessary. And the reason why is because of the nature of what you're putting in the ground. And so, waste that are excluded from a C D landfill that are not going to this facility, that are household, commercial waste, or garbage. All liquids, sledges, wet panes, all liquid chemicals, electronics, pre-soaked, treated lumber, any type of hazardous material, any type of waste load. Any type of animals, batteries, fluorescent bulbs, none of that is allowed. So, you remove from your waste stream the anything that could impact groundwater and impact the environment on a substantial level. And there are procedures that you follow that do that, that make public aware, that make inspections, train certified operators that actually check loads coming in. And then when the load is done, the operator looks at the load before they do anything with it. There's any suspect, they call the office, they stop the driver. The driver is responsible, come back and pick up the load. I can promise you that haulers only do that once, and then don't repeat their offense. And that's literally like food, stuff up landfills that if there's a burden bag in the load, they'll call the driver back. And then he has to go through his entire load and find if there's any. And they only do that once, and by the time they've got two hours there, they won't do it again, they'll do it over. Acceptable waste includes household rubbish, yard waste, storm debris, waste building materials, packaging, rubble from construction, remodeling, repair, renovation operations on houses, commercial buildings, and other structures. It includes masonry materials, G block, roofing waste, insulation, scrap templates, wood products, uncompromising concrete, soil, burden, waste asphalt, pavement, and wood ash, which is untreated, from what you hear. So, these materials going in are not hazardous by nature, do not leach significant chemicals, they're not a significant toxic source to cause problems. So, we're not putting in any big risk, which is why the construction standards for a C D landfill are lesser than municipal, lesser than municipal, and far lesser than hazardous waste management. So, this is the most, is the safest material to put in there, is basically it. The landfill design, keep the three-foot clay cap in place, and that's a design criteria. So, you know, if you're asking, are we going to put in, are we going to dig up and just put the waste right on top of the old waste areas or something? You're going to leave that cap in place, and then the three-foot layer, leave a minimum of three feet in place. And then, and then puts construction demolition waste over. And then every week, that waste is covered. It's a native requirement, you cover the soil, and it's great out, usually it's two-foot deep material, and then it's covered with soil. And then next week, you can put additional, and you can put soap over the top of that again. And what happens is the soil here mixes with the waste as it's compacted, it's driven over. And so, it's solid material, wood, a lot of wood, typical, and then mix it up. And then when you close that facility, again, you put two feet of clay on top of it. So, it ends up creating a barrier for rainfall to get into the waste that's in municipal waste load. And when you design this, a C D cell over, it's called piggybacking, over existing waste. You design the cell where that cell brings stormwater to your septic tanks. So, you don't pull the water on the landfill, you force it to flow off into your septic tanks. And you know, you're not putting water into your waste load. So, over time, you actually create a greater barrier to rainfall getting into the waste and waste that's loaded. So, typically, it's not, it doesn't, it's not a negative picture, it's actually a positive picture. You restrict rain from getting into that. In terms of operating landfill, we did just a simple cost analysis, and you see the C C L F in the form on page two. That's Calvin County landfill. We took their volume reports and for the past year, and looked at their volumes, and it's all of a record. Calvin County charges $26 a ton. And we did just an estimate, if you did 25% Calvin County landfill's volume, you'd be looking at revenues $228,000. If it went up to 35%, you'd be at $320,000 for the first year. Now, you have facilities that are just across the state volume and charge $37 a ton. And Calvin County is correct, soon to go up on there because of a lot of the issues. Their prices are not in state $26 a ton, their costs are going to be a lot. I would not charge $26 a ton, you could be very competitive and like $34 a ton, $35. Little could be charged $37, and you're still going to pull in waste streams that are in your area over radius around the facility. If it's cost effective, it's a haul to your facility, that's what's going to drive whether or not you receive the waste. And the cost effect, this is not the disposal cost, it's the time and labor and transportation that the transporter, hauler has to get to your facility. And so, if you're the closest facility, you're getting those. And so, you'll pull in waste from all the surrounding areas without that, because it would just be cheaper to come to you just from the box in the wall. Those, that estimate will gradually increase year after year. I can tell you that Calvin County's waste has substantially increased. This past year to this year, I can handle shore's landfill, their waste stream is doubled. From last year to this year, you're actually, we're requesting permit modification to permit that volume increase. So, waste volumes are up, and they're going to continue to be up for parts of time. Part of that is from storm cleanup, and part of that is from stimulus money coming into the economy. And part of that is for everybody, you know, who stays at home, sees everything that's wrong, and wants to fix it. And that's happening, that's a pressing outwork up there. So, we expect that trend to continue over the next couple of years, fair percentage. In Calvin landfill, we provide funding for the county that can be used on Cali water treatment projects year after year. Calvin landfill produces illegal dump, Cali water. And we see illegal dump sites that are very common when there's no convenient available place to dispose the material. And the county right now has their convenience centers, and offers the free days for rollouts initially on roadside and convenience centers. That's a positive step to eliminating illegal waste dump. Every illegal waste dump site holds water, tires, anything that, any vessel holds water, it's a place for mosquitoes to reproduce. And then mosquitoes are disease vectors and transmit diseases. And then any type of waste that's raw creates a global problem. So, you have public health issues that come out of illegal waste sites. And when you remove those, reduce the number of those, you reduce those subsequent problems on a substantial level. And most counties offer free day, like maybe six months, like four weeks, just to help residents clean up their yards, clean up their farms. And it's a very effective approach. In addition, you're paying right now the disposal, you know, that waste that's accumulated, you need a convenience center, you could build. If you now just have rolloffs at location and or depending on whether or not you continue to have a convenience center, so it's an analysis question and answer. All of that waste that's collected can apply to your C D landfill. So, it could be a substantial cost savings to the county as well there. Most county, most C D landfills do some metal recycling, because people haul the metal along with their wood, along with their other things, like piping, whether it's, you know, roofing material, renaming, a variety of those comes in. And it's easy to pick out and put in a roll off and send to a metal recycling. So, if you have a facility, do that with the volume of metal. You know, it's a huge source of revenue, know that it's a definite source. And it's consistent, so that's something that will add to the bottom line. In addition, we've got a lot of severe weather over the past year, and I don't think that's going to decline, we're facing another hurricane season. Storm debris cleanup is a substantial cost, and handling of all shores. And in the course of two weeks after the last hurricane that went through, the landfill facility volume increased 10 times. 10 times their daily volumes are shown up. And if you have been in that past drought, and you have to handle the cleanup, if you have a haul that's somewhere else, you're going to pay. And you're going to pay the exorbitant amount. But if you have a facility that you own, now all you have to do is deal with haul. And you contract haulers to pick it up, and they drop it off at your facility, and you don't have to pay any of those disposal costs. And they're substantial, I mean, it's, that's why FEMA exists. And you go for all the money you can to cover that expense, but you never did it all cover. And you can find the, you know, find the counties in the group of some of those, and they'll tell you, you're way ahead if you have a landfill to haul to. If you decide to move forward, the next step would be to give A M solid waste ranch. And that would involve bringing the S Ds and having a meeting with, you know, the higher level, the U S C. I'm assuming Steve, probably not, that John can cross me. And Steve with the ten, and myself, and the purpose would be to determine what A M would require that is site specific to your facility. Because you have a landfill that already exists, you have a stormwater management system that already exists, you have a monitoring network that already exists, most facilities don't have that. So, you don't have to put in any more costs. You have explosive gas monitoring system, may need a little bit of upgrade, but not much, very minimal cost. Normally, you have to do what's called hydrogeologic characterization. You don't have one done, you have an expensive one done in mid-nineties. I'll dig that out of the files, dust it off, and I'll present that in a meeting and say, and it's true. Y'all have more wells and more geologic data at your site than any site I have ever seen in landfillize, that's true. I think the drilling was hand-handed, that was done in the 90s, I think y'all had way too many wells put in, and they weren't, they weren't truly needed. And I can justify that position, my position there. But the point of that is, you shouldn't have to do hydrogeologic characterization. And in permitting, the two major expenses are the hydrogeologic characterization and then designing your facility. And in this case, your design, in terms of meeting A M requirements, is not going to be all that difficult to do. I'm not minimizing what Steve will bring in to take it, because he'll come up with an approach that actually protects groundwater. And stages the way you place the waste, so you can build into an area, and the landfill's actually just pretty much in the state where it is branded to receive points. In terms of construction, there's very little to do to actually be able to open a cell at your facility, which is extraordinary. I don't know of any other site in the city that's close to being in that condition, where you could literally get your permit, get your scale house, get your scale, and get your permit placed and open the doors and actually start receiving waste. Once you have the right foot on site to manage that, you're almost there already. Whereas most facilities would have to construct the whole thing, you don't have to do that, it's already there. One consideration would be to evaluate your solid waste management plan for the county and roll this facility into that plan. So, that's something that would have to be looked at, again, not a major expense, but it would need to be done. We'd have to apply for a stormwater permit, any open landfill during construction and operation with moving earth materials, you have to have a stormwater permit. That's a very straightforward process, Steve and I do this all the time. And then you'd want to train operators, we have solid waste association. And they offer training programs across the state, most of the time it's handled in Huntsville, SWA. And those training programs, whoever's going to work at landfill goes through a certification process. So, they learn what waste are accepted and what are not. They learn what the monitoring requirements are. They learn, you know, the critical elements of actually being somebody who is on site, who is protecting human health and the environment. And therefore, they have to certification and have to lead continuing education units, and we are here to give that certification. So, that's a good overview. In my opinion, we have a fantastic site, that's very suitable for the landfill. We definitely have one of the most cost-effective sites anywhere, just based on the fact that you have almost everything that you would need, other than putting in a scale house, putting up a fence, a day, proper day.
Any questions, Mike, concerning?
My, when you start packing that on top of what's there, is that dump conscious damage to the dump line of those areas? Or is pushing, pushing that soil down?
It's, it's, it actually really won't be pushing the soil down, it's been compacting. So, the waste, when the waste is compacted, you know, and then when your, when it's cap, it's compacted. And there's compaction requirements that have to be met to have, to meet A M closure requirements. So, when that landfill was closed in 1994, that clay material that put on top was, was compacted. It's typically put in eight-inch thick lips and then compacted down to six inches. And then another eight-inch lip of soil is put on top of clay, and then that's compacted. And then a third layer is put in, and then you put in, once that's compacted, you have three layers, there's each six inches thick compacted. Whether it's a final compaction, then put in topsoil, or at least six inches of material that's suitable to support plants. And, you know, so it's compacted already. And then normally, during normal operations, you drive either those or compact over, over that waste. And so, you're compacting the waste that's coming in onto an existing plant. If there's any, you know, landfills do several at times. If there's any, you know, landfills do settle over time because there's waste grades over time. So you have settling, we address settling and the corrective action. That was the reason why we wanted so much water on top of it. And why you have the combination that has shown up in groundwater is because you have areas that settle. And then in addition, we have barriers of water running off of land. So water will come. And when that water comes, we go in. And that's been corrected. And then in your design, you, the cells will redesign such that they will drain to the set ponds during drought. So you're not going to be putting water in to your existing waste. And then settling, you know, it's such a slow rate that you grade, your grading is going to address things on an ongoing basis. And then when you reach a final grade, you close it. And those grading, their grading criteria that A M stipulates, they have to do that. Slops have to be typically a four-to-one slope. And we have areas to receive three-to-one slope on the sides. And then on top, you typically leave the top with a five percent grade, which will drain soil. We don't recommend going to roll that, you can help it because of just that factor. You have settling over time. You want to have enough of a slope where you still have a good slope twenty, thirty years later. So you plan for, you plan for that in your design.
And this is strictly like trace path building material. This is not any chemicals or any plant or material that can go in. It's just strictly building.
None are allowed. You can put furniture, old furniture, you know, those parts of those. Mattress is showing up. Landfills don't like mattresses because they're hard to pack. They just take a lot of space. But you can put an old furniture, you know, anything that's considered household rubbish. But you cannot put anything that rots, something, no food, nothing that can possibly rot. Absolutely no liquid waste going to a C and D landfill. So if an inspector sees liquid, they're refused at the door. And then if something's offloaded and there's any type of container that can carry liquid, it's inspected. Containers are required to be crushed and rendered unable to hold liquid before you can put them in the C and D. So you see an inspection, you see a, that was like, you can hold liquid, then it's inspected. And if it's not an empty container, it's refused. It's, you know, you send your customer down the road, they're not allowed in. And then if a commercial contractor comes in, you document. You put it down, this contractor's bringing this at such and such a date. And you give an inspection law. And then that, that record is kept. And then from then on, you check every load that that contractor brings in. And so they prove that they're not trying to sneak something in. So your inspectors have to do a good job. It doesn't take a lot to do. We teach them how to recognize any, you know, hazardous material there is. But if you see anything liquid, stop right there, it's not going to. The county can't pay.
We had a contractor come in and dogs and cameras to be our liability. We didn't complain about that.
Actually, you can take them to task on it. And go after whoever the liable party is, whoever the owner is. So, you know, in credit rate law, whoever that individual is that transports, has this waste, has to be permitted. And then they have to trans, they have to transport that waste to a permitted facility. And if they violate that, they're serious Resource Conservation Recovery Act laws. They are in place and are, have serious criminal offenses. It's rare.
I'm sorry, Andrew, do you, Mr. Mayor couldn't speak in due time. And I would appreciate you coming. Any last questions?
And you said the county, 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 county.
Yeah, everyone's trying to, trying to say this.
So we, we have those that ask questions to these facilities.
Absolutely.
You're welcome. Is, is any of your hard art, if your direction is an information plan, how do you handle A M resolution? Something? Did you take concern in this?
I'm, oh, but.
Okay. What, what is, now your resolution would be to go, to continue the process and move forward. Okay. So we have a little bit of this made in San Tarr, new business.
New business.
Okay. We have a new business. Okay, can we have another question?
No, you know, I would be, please don't look at the facility before we make such a, a big decision of the landfill. And that's, you know, that's the hardest way to come back on us, come back on the tax table. And we need to really talk to these other, like Calvin County and Nelson County, and talk to them and see what issues they have before we do our tax table. I was just asked to, you know, build a topic.
All right, so there, Commissioner, Deel was asked that we put a resolution, basically move forward. I guess the next step would be going to, with the three of y'all or the four of y'all meeting with A M. And we'll look at how to order that. All right.
Another thing, in that resolution, if we do go forward, we restrict it to our, my knowledge and, you know, residents of Cleveland County, we would not be taking out some of the offices. We would be taking out other people's debris.
And then you would want to, you would want to open that, that waste also. And that's where you're going to get what you're, that's where you're going to reach the revenue. Cheers.
So we would be taking outside people, potential going in cashers. Potential going in cashers.
Not like that's the big. But yes, that's where, that's where the revenue of this comes from. It's up to you to add up to a, to a commercial to an outside. You've got a radius that you're going to accept traction and charge person for it.
But it's just, I understand that again, this is just a very large priority. But there's not going to be any chemicals, any plant. And someone will be trying to monitor it. But yeah, there's a field that comes back on us. But if we're not able to handle what we're dealing with.
Not according to what, nor in his say.
You won't be letting people into a C and D landfill and just wondering now whether or not the trucks. There'd be, there'd be two guys on the field at all times. Pressure, have you been to one before?
No, that's very.
I, I might have. Let me tell you, I had a bread truck come in, just a bread truck when I was there. And that guy was still picking up bread, putting it back in the truck when I left. But, but, but my landfill, I was at, there's, that landfill was made up of two or three different types of landfill. If they'd went all around to the left, he would have been fine. But on this side of the landfill, the C and D landfill, which was where I was, I was taking deck material and stuff like that, just boards and stuff like that. So if you go into some of these landfills, one of the biggest things is, you better make sure you unload your truck, but if not, they'll have you out there loading it up by hand.
Now, I have talked to the Jefferson County, that's reasonable, because first of all, yes, we need, we need to keep jumping out of our town. The centers that we have built are often, the places.
For my job time, I know that he's speaking to us. And I know we can discuss this with the lady who's speaking. He's got another meeting he has to go to concerning what he's going to speak to us about.